I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Just one of the many. Let's be witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Georgie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chris Garola is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Villa Senor?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna, with that, we'll move to approval of the agenda, item number three, or number four. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds, I guess we'll give it to Albert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, presentation, Southern California Edison presentation by Natalie Yanaz, Government Relations Manager.
Hi there. Perfect. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Natalie Yanaz, I'm Government Relations Manager covering the city of Fillmore for Southern California Edison. I'd like to start actually by thanking Councilmember Brogie for attending our roundtable about a week and a half ago with our CEO Steve Powell, President and CEO Steve Powell. It was a very engaging morning conversation with electeds throughout the county, and we really appreciate her participation. I'd also like to thank you for having me here tonight, I know that the Clean Power Alliance came and spoke last month, and tonight my presentation will cover the offerings that SCE has within our services that we provide, mostly focused on, my presentation will be mostly focused on greenhouse gas reduction, which is extremely important, including the improvement of our air quality and achieving carbon neutral, a carbon neutral future. In addition, I'll be talking about a few of our renewable clean energy options that we offer, and just a brief overview of how SCE will partner with the city should the city move forward with joining CCA. I would also like to emphasize before we get started with the presentation, that we truly appreciate our long-term partnership with the city. We are able to serve our residents, your residents, and your business customers through that long-term partnership. Tonight, I want to make sure that you and the residents here understand the choices and options that are available through Southern California Edison. When it comes to CCA, Edison is neutral and does not take a position for or against as long as all customers are treated fairly and the grid reliability and safety is preserved. I also want to mention that we are bound by a code of conduct, and thus remain neutral with regards to CCAs. I am here tonight to present to you factual information. So I do want to start with just a little bit of information regarding our partnership with the city of Fillmore. I'll highlight a few of the items here on the slide, the first being the franchise fee. Through the franchise fee agreement with the city, we provide an annual payment to the city for the year 2022. That amount, as you see there, is $126,931 that was remitted this year. And that provides us with access to right-of-way and provide the electricity needs that the city has on a daily basis. Approximately 54 of our employees call the city of Fillmore home. We have just over 5,800 residential customers, and of those, a quarter of those customers, residential customers, are part of our care program. And that, through a qualification process, provides a 30% bill discount for those customers. You can see we have close to 1,000 business customers, there's also information on electric vehicles that are registered here within the city through the DMV, solar installation projects and battery storage projects. Give me one second. But what I'd most like to highlight is actually some of the information towards the bottom of the screen, which really talks about our partnership with the city. Through our charitable giving arm, we give back throughout our service area, including here in the city of Fillmore. You can see I've listed a few here, the Fillmore Volunteer Firefighters Foundation, Boys and Girls Club, the campus onsite at this, just next to the school, but also additionally, we are trying to work with the Boys and Girls Club to get additional funding for the Mini Mansions Center as well. Most recently, some of the efforts that you may have seen throughout the community are with regards to scholarships. Edison has our Edison Scholars, so high school seniors are eligible to apply for a scholarship through our Edison Scholar Program. This year, we awarded 30 high school seniors with $50,000 towards their higher education efforts, and we had a recipient here in Ventura County as well. In addition to that, we also provided 10 STEM scholarships through our partnership with the Ventura Community College. So much of our funding goes right back here into the city of Fillmore and surrounding areas. But I'm here to talk about clean energy, so I'll dive into that. As we all know, California has very ambitious goals when it comes to clean energy, and at SCE, we have studied what it takes not only to achieve those goals, but also to do it in a way that is practical and affordable. Our vision is simple, we're going to clean up the electric grid and use low-carbon sources of energy to help other parts of the economy shift away from fossil fuels. Because, as it says there, as the grid gets cleaner, so does everything that plugs into it. Also noted on this slide is our white paper, Pathway 2045, which you can find on our website there at edison.com/pathway2045. In this white paper, you will see three pillars to achieving carbon neutrality in California. These include deep decarbonization of the electric sector, which is occurring now, significant clean electrification of transportation and building coupled with advanced energy efficiency, and the use of low-carbon fuels like green hydrogen to, green hydrogen for hard-to-electrify applications such as industrial use and heavy-duty long-range goods movement. And we'll certainly need to sequester or sink the remaining carbon in order to reach carbon neutrality. Unfortunately, we can't solve these things sequentially, we have to act now and we have to be aggressive. There isn't enough time to clean up the grid, then clean up transportation, then clean up buildings. Everything we do at SCE is intended to help further this vision. This clean energy future will depend on millions of decisions by our customers. This is why we are working to make it easier and more affordable for customers to choose clean energy options such as electric vehicles and heat pump appliances. So here's what our, as of 22, 2022, what our power mix looks like. So approximately 45% of our energy is clean. Within that, about 34% is green, and you can see those breakdowns there. So that is what we're looking at today when we talk about what Edison is putting out there as far as our energy mix. When it comes to this energy, clean energy benefits all of us and all of our customers. An electric-led future provides cleaner air and helps reduce climate change impacts. It's estimated that the average customer will see a total energy or a whole wallet savings spend of about 1/3 by the year 2045. And those customers that are electrifying will see a greater savings. The transition will require hundreds of billions of dollars in local investment, which generate green jobs that can't be outsourced. Many of the improvements we will, we will have to make to accommodate clean energy sources like rooftop solar will also make the grid more reliable. Sectionizing the grid, which we're hard at, working to implement, and installing more automated equipment will allow for us to respond to outages faster and minimize the number of customers impacted, so smaller and shorter outages. And I can't stress the word partnership enough. It is with great honor that I get to work with the city of Fillmore and along with my colleagues at SCE through these partnerships. One of them I'll highlight that's on the screen here that we've been working with the city, or the city's been doing a lot of work on, and we've been trying to catch up on our end as well as the expedition of EV charging permits. So just allowing the city, or just, you know, for the city to pass an ordinance to expedite that permitting process is significant as we move forward with the clean energy transition. Helping customers go green, there are a few programs here listed on the screen, and I'm only gonna highlight a few of them and then talk about a few more on the following screens. One second. I know we have a number of kids in the audience today and families. The last week of school, my kids brought home a nasty bug that I'm still trying to get over, and I wasn't planning on popping cough drops in my mouth the whole presentation, so. So here, highlighted on the screen, I'll mention a few programs. We have our pre-owned EV initiatives, I'm sorry, incentives, which allow up to $4,000 in incentives for SCE customers who purchase a pre-owned electric vehicle. There's information on our website, I'd be happy to share that directly. Coupled with that, for our EV customers, we offer a special EV rate, and so this provides greater savings to those customers who are electrifying, like I mentioned earlier. And then I'll mention this, it certainly has an impact on our clean future, but it has immediate impacts today on our customers, but it's our demand-response programs. We have our summer discount program, our smart energy program, and our Power Saver, Power Saver Rewards program. And I encourage councils, city staff, I encourage those folks listening tonight to look into our demand-response programs, they're extremely helpful, there is a cost savings to the customer, and they allow SCE to, you know, be able to respond quicker and in different ways to the demands, especially through the summer months. So Edison does offer a green rate, and so as you can see here on this slide, it's a voluntary clean energy rate program for residential and non-residential customers. There's a choice to purchase clean energy for a portion, 50%, or all of electricity used. It is a certified program. However, I'll hop to the slide next, this program has been fully subscribed for some time, and so customers looking to get on the green rate today would be placed on a waiting list. There's a lot of information on this slide, so again, I'm just gonna highlight a little bit of it. Back in 2022, we filed a petition with the CPUC to make modifications to our program. You can see that last bullet point there says we're expecting a decision sometime in 2024. So although we do offer a green rate program, currently it is fully subscribed. In addition, we offer a community renewables program. So currently, this program is also fully subscribed, I know, a lot of demand, but in 2024, we do have two new community solar projects coming online with available capacity. We contract with a developer, and as you can see there, we're expecting about 32 megawatts of new project to be scheduled to come online in 2024, so we work with a developer directly, that contact information is there as well. Customers, the city can reach out to that developer, but more information on that should be available soon. So as far as community choice aggregation, or CCAs, again, it has a definition there, it's a customer choice program. As I stated earlier, SCE is bound by the, or follows the code of conduct, and so we do not lobby or market against CCA formation, and we only provide factual information about our rates and programs. But here's somewhat of the impact when a city decides to join a CCA. So again, I've talked about SCE supports the choice as long as all customers are treated fairly, and that the grid is, remains, grid reliability and safety are preserved. As far as the right side of the screen, how does it break down? So essentially, when a city does join CCA, now, again, there's a process with that, but once the CCA is up and operating with the city, the CCA will be procuring energy on behalf of customers. That energy will still be transmitted through SCE transmission and infrastructure, and ultimately end up at the customer's house. SCE will still provide the bill for all charges, and as you can see there, it'll be broken out into two different sections, one stating the delivery component from SCE and one the generation component from the CCA, and in this case, the Clean Power Alliance. Here's where I'm gonna spend a little bit more time, it's a question that we get asked a lot, is, you know, how does the dollar break down as far as, you know, when customers are paying their SCE bill? So Southern California Edison does not have the typical business model for making a profit from sale of its products and services. That's because in California, through the California Public Utilities Commission, the commission wants to encourage customers to conserve power and to ensure that investor-owned utilities like SCE continue investing in electrical system infrastructure to keep it reliable. This separation of sales and profits means that SCE does not make more money when sales increase or when more usage is, is, more energy is used. Typically, about 49 cents of every dollar pays for the cost of generating energy. Of that, about 43 cents is for the power SCE purchases from other parties such as developers of natural gas fire plants and large-scale resources for renewable energy. These amounts are passed on to the customer at no cost with no markup. The other six, the other 6 cents for generation is, comes from SCE invested or owned facilities such as our Big Creek Hydro plant in the High Sierras, hydroelectric project in the High Sierras, and the Mountain View Natural Gas Fire Plant. About 36 cents of each dollar goes to the cost of transmission and distribution infrastructure, including day-to-day operations and maintenance. 11 cents goes to wildfire-related costs such as making poles and wires more fire resistant, vegetation clearance, and enhancing aerial inspections as well as the cost of wildfire insurance. The remaining 4 cents includes costs for several state programs such as our energy-efficient incentives. The commission reviews all these costs for each investment-owned utility every four years, if it's previously three, through the transparent process called the general rate case. We just filed our 2025-2028 general rate case in May. This is a completely transparent process, and public input is always welcome, and participation from groups such as the Public Advocates Office and the Utility Reform Network often participate. Through this process, the commission allows SCE to earn a fixed return on its capital investments, the infrastructure you see in, every day in your communities, such as poles, wires, substations, and more. SCE does not earn a profit by selling electricity, but by building, operating, and maintaining the electrical grid that serves communities throughout our 25, or I'm sorry, our 50,000-square-mile service area. So should the city join the Clean Power Alliance, the CPA will take over the generation portion of the bill, and the other items will remain with SCE. I know that last month, the Clean Power Alliance did cover the power charge indifference adjustment, so I won't go too much into depth here, but essentially, it's ensuring that customers who stay with SCE aren't burdened with the cost of those who leave. A coworker, you know, once explained to me when I came to SCE, if we all went out to dinner, we all ordered, and then half the table got up and left because they didn't want Italian food, they wanted Thai food, the rest of us shouldn't be stuck with the entire bill. And so that essentially is the purpose of the PCIA. Here is more information on the PCIA as far as the components that make up that, the algorithm and how it flows into our customer rates. Again, I'm not gonna go into detail about it, but it is here at your reference, and I can certainly provide you with more information if you have questions on this later. And with that, I think that brings me to the end of my presentation.
Any questions for Natalie?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Natalie, thank you for your presentation, it was very informative. I really liked that breakdown too of the dollar, where that dollar breaks down, I think a lot of people hopefully are watching and here can appreciate that.
Thank you.
So my question is back again to the waiting list. So middle of next year, 2024, it's, can you get on the waiting list now, or is it the waiting list full until then?
I believe we are still taking customers on the waiting list, but the energy that we have procured through that program is fully subscribed, so until we're able to bring on more providers for clean energy, we aren't able to open up that list.
Okay, okay. And then, I had a follow-up question, I think it was about, off the top of my head, okay, it was about the waitlist, and then?
Can we go back to any of the slides?
You know, it was about the, talking about, you know, the being impartial, you know, all that things with CPA, but also making sure that there's fairness across all of the clientele, you know, all the, those who subscribe for, for energy, which is everybody, but then also making sure that the grid is reliable. So the responsibility for grid reliability, does that lie with Edison and being that it is the transfer? Okay.
It does.
Okay.
And essentially, when I go back to this slide and it shows the kind of snippet of a customer bill, those charges for SCE really are the infrastructure and operation and maintenance of our infrastructure that the energy then is carried through.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then I had one more follow-up question, it wasn't particularly on the presentation, but I happened to go to the green rate program website, and you know, it gave sort of the, sort of disclaimer at the top that, you know, there's the, there's a waiting list.
Waiting list, yeah.
And also, there was some added information, I'm just trying to see here, where is it? To be added to the green waitlist, you must meet the customer eligibility requirements. So there's a few different things, a couple of acronyms here, and it takes you to a sheet for customer eligibility, let's see here. Only bundled service customers are billed based on metered consumption eligible to receive service under the schedule. Direct access customers, community choice aggregation, service customers, community aggregation customers, et cetera, are not eligible. So that's basically saying if you are a part of CPA, you, you know, cannot get onto the green rate program, but again, you can opt out of CPA, stick with Edison, and be on the green rate program through Edison.
Yeah, you could get on the waitlist, and you know, I should have, I should have covered that bullet on the slide. So bundled service is customers who pay for generation transmission and distribution, distribution services, so that would be considered a bundled customer.
Okay.
Yep. So if, yes, if somebody was essentially receiving their energy from a CCA, then they wouldn't be eligible for the green rate unless, you know, they chose differently or chose to make, you know, various actions to come back to Edison.
Sure, yeah, no one can say, if they opted to, to opt out.
Yes, opt out, yes, yes.
Opt out of it and be with Edison.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions?
For me, yeah. Thank you, Natalie, great presentation, I really appreciated that. Can you provide some information, contact information for our constituents to reach out to SCE if they have additional questions, or website, wherever they can go to get answers, because I know this is becoming a hot-button issue in our community?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure the city manager and I can discuss how best to communicate that information out to residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions? Also, can you send our city manager the slide presentation, just so that we have it for reference?
Of course, yeah, I believe they already have it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Of course, thank you all, have a good evening.
You too. Okay, next, we're gonna move to public hearing, we're gonna limit it to three minutes apiece per speaker. When you have 30 seconds less, left, the yellow light will flash, and when your time is up, the red light will flash, so you'll have a little warning that you have 30 seconds left. Our first speaker is Liz Coffey. Okay, we'll put, we'll wait on her then, we'll put her a little farther down. How about Dawn Maroney?
Hi, Council, I'm Dawn Maroney. I am here to talk to you guys about censorship, and what we as our community should be allowed to say and have opinions, we all have opinions that are different from each other, that's what makes America, America. So I had a very strong opinion about the drag show that One Step Alavés put on, and I shared it with a couple of community groups, and a lot of the community didn't know about this drag show. I know because in the Fillmore Community News Group, that post got a huge amount of engagement. I only knew it was taken down when people I hardly knew texted me saying, can you send me what you posted? Because somebody's removed it. I'm gonna read to you guys what I posted, it is my opinion, but I did back my opinion up with the facts that have helped me come to my opinion. So this was on June 19th. Are you okay with a program meant to help at-risk youth celebrating Pride Month with a drag queen show? Because a local program here in Fillmore did just that. This agenda is being pushed hard here in Fillmore, and I wanted to share some stats. Per UCLA 2022 study, only 0.5 of our entire country's 334 million populace identifies as LGBTQ. Daily Science shared a study showing 2% of youth, of all youth, are in gangs. CDC published a study proving 1 in 36 eight-year-olds have autism spectrum disorder. In the state of California, that is 44% of our children, of eight-year-olds, have autism. I share these numbers because gangs are a way bigger issue with the youth than those identifying as LGBTQ. Why isn't an after-school program designed to help troubled youth placing their focus where it's really needed? I have a child on the spectrum, he's now, this wasn't in my post, but he's in his mid-20s now, he went to Agora High School. He was led to believe in school that he was bisexual. And I can tell you that the majority of kids on the spectrum, they don't feel right in their body, and they're looking for a way to fit in, any way to fit in. But that doesn't make them trans, that makes them a target for this trans agenda. Now, my son in his mid-20s, you know, definitely does not feel that he is bisexual, we did support him during this, but this was an agenda that he got from the school. So, we are sexualizing our kids, and I think it's time we stop and start allowing our kids to just be kids. Then I asked, what say you? And I put a couple disclaimers, that this is not a hate post. I don't care what people identify as, you do you, I'm gonna do me, we're all people, we're all humans, we're all God's children, I could care less. But there is two councilmembers, Council Villa Senor and Councilmember Mendez, who were at that Pride event. Councilmember Mendez was a moderator of the group that removed my post.
Okay, can you please wrap it up?
Okay. I don't feel it's okay to have councilmembers supporting our people here that are removing our freedom of speech, it's completely- It's completely unacceptable, and I will remember that in my vote.
Thank you. Can we cease from clapping? I meant, we did it last month when the Pride people were here, so please don't, you know, don't hoot and holler and clap, and, okay? Thank you. Our next speaker is Lee Palacio? Did I get, did I get that right, Lee?
Mr. Palacio.
Okay, I knew it was, thank you.
I just want to voice my opinion. When I found out what had went on, I didn't know what to say, especially when I heard there was two council members present. That just blew my mind. And you guys want us to have an ethical sense of life in the city of Fillmore? Me and my family have been here forever. We never thought it would come to here, and we're not going to have it now. And how we can vote against it, we're going to vote against it. I'm almost related to a lot of people here, and believe me, the votes will kill you guys if you guys are trying to be re-elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Raymal Lloyd.
Hello. My name's Raymal Lloyd. Sorry if you guys know me. Not really. But I am too kind of appalled about what happened. I am a resident of Fillmore. I'm here tonight to state my opposition to the drag queen performance on Friday, June 16th, at One Step Alavés. As Mayor Protem Vea Senor and Council Member Mendez were in attendance for the show, I denounce their support for this behavior in front of our youth. These are the children of Fillmore, and we are committed to protecting them from sexualized and harmful behavior and teachings. We are here to say that we have a voice, and we have a vote, and we will use both to shield our kids from, keep them safe. I also would like to say that I understand, as council people, you get invited to different clubs and organizations, and I, hopefully, you did not know this was going to happen because I looked over and I seen one council member smiling like, like it was uncomfortable. And I would have been doing the same thing because if I did not know that was happening, I would have been uncomfortable about it, but you got to represent, right? So you go over there and, you know, you see this, and all of a sudden, you're like, oh my gosh. So I just, you know, I want to put it out there, you guys, did you approve of this or disapprove of this action in front of 13 and 19-year-old kids? And you have it right now. You can say that, you can clear the air, and everybody would be happy. Other than that, have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrea Enriquez.
Hi, good evening. I'm a Fillmore resident, and I'm here to complain about One Step Alavés for hiring a drag queen to perform in front of our youth. As Mayor Protem Vea Senor and Council Member Mendez were in attendance for the show, I denounce their support for this behavior in front of our, for this behavior in front of our youth. We need leaders who use their voice to protect our children from sexually explicit content. You may think I am exaggerating when I say sexually explicit content, but I am not. This man who was performing was dressed in a bathing suit with knee-high, black leather stiletto boots while he stripteased as, as he took off his robe while dancing to a sexually explicit song. You can even hear the crowd cheering during the performance while shouting, work it. Those who were enjoying themselves during the drag show failed to see that there were indeed teens who walked out because they were uncomfortable. These teens had the common sense to know what they were watching was wrong. I have two questions. Was this drag queen hired with parental consent? And would it be acceptable to invite a female stripper to perform in front of youth at the Boys and Girls Club? No, absolutely not. So why was this drag performance allowed? Let's protect our youth and put their needs ahead of the sexualized aspects of the LGBTQ+ agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Letitia Olivera. Olivera.
I, too, am a resident of Fillmore, and I, too, am here to oppose what happened at One Step Alavés. I'm very disappointed that adults would do this for our children as leaders, especially of our community. I have children, and it's not okay for them to see such things, whether it be out in public or in private. It's not okay. We're hurting who they are and who we want them and we expect them to become. So I hope that you would think about what you are doing and as representatives, Vea Senor and Mendez, in our community, because we voted you in because we expected better leaders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Gorola.
Good evening. My name is Tim Gorola. I've lived most of my 70 years here in, here in Fillmore, outside the city limits, however. I have raised four children here. Only one family remains. We're fortunate to have our grandkids here, lots of cousins and nephews and nieces, and I just really wanted to say, I oppose the drag queen performance for the benefit of all of those children and all the children of the city of Fillmore. That was on the 16th of June. We had been away, and I come back and see it in the newspaper, started asking a lot of questions. I, at this point, I not only oppose that performance, but any similar performance of a sexual nature by any gender. We need to protect our children from sexualized and harmful behavior, and the teachings we need to ask them are why? What are the intentions of the organizations? We need to work with those organizations to find out why and what they're doing. There's some underlying intent there. Secondly, all of the parents and guardians and voters here, I don't know if they were aware of this, and they need to be aware of what's going on in the city. And lastly, we need to look at what our next step is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rex Mohan.
Good evening. My name is Rex Mohan. I have lived with my family in Fillmore for over five years. Prior to that, we lived for 20 years in Santa Paula, and I've been in Ventura County with my wife and our 12 children for the last 43 years. I'm also here to speak about One Step Alavés. It is wrong that people with gender dysphoria should be able to display their sexual preferences and proclivities in public places where children are present. It is wrong that they should expose children to their own confusion about who they are while at the same time raising questions that children can't possibly process. Growing up and going through puberty, meeting the challenges of adolescence, and working through the teenage years are confusing enough without having an adult force their confused ideas of sexuality down their throats. I condemn Fillmore City Council's participation in the drag shows. I will work hard to defeat in future elections any city council members that support such conduct. I was a California Highway Patrolman for 26 years. If I had gotten a call of a man dancing in a pink women's bathing suit in front of a high school, we would have responded and arrested the person as a hazard to the children at that school, and rightly so. Normal people don't do such things. Now we're going to support such behavior in the name of some sort of fairness to the man dancing in the pink bathing suit? Not only is it wrong, it's unnecessary. There are plenty of places where people with such preferences can go to express themselves without doing it in front of our children. The fact is that such people who exhibit such outlandish behavior in front of children is a sign that they are predatory and prepared to groom children for their own purposes. The slogan, "We are coming for your children," often spoken at Pride parades, is not a joke. They are serious about it. The rise of child pornography on the internet is at an all-time high. If you haven't seen the movie The Sound of Freedom concerning the child sex trade, I earnestly urge you to go and see it. It is hard to inform oneself about such difficult subjects. Often, it's easier to ignore such things and pretend they don't exist. It is time to wake up to these threats. We need to fight this erosion of the family and to fight back against giving these predators a voice and control in our society and over our children. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Joseph Lampara.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here to talk about something else, although I will say I agree with what's been said here so far this evening. Up there, you say the best small town, or the last best small town in Southern California, we should keep that. Anyway, what I'm here to talk about is the code violations, the, that have been ongoing process against a certain number of property owners here in Fillmore. I have presented to the clerk over there a number of envelopes, which I asked that he distribute to the city council members and to Mr. McSweeney. And I apologize to Ms. Israel, because I didn't realize she would be here, but she's the city council, and if she wants, I can forward that via email, the same information. So what I really have to say is in the envelope. It would take too long to say it here, so I appreciate it. If each one of you would read it, look at the information that's in there, think about it, and then use that to help make your decision. Another thing I'd like to say is, initially, I spoke with Mr. McSweeney. I took his, what he said, and I wrote a narrative which was presented to the board back in January or early February. Subsequent to that, I haven't had much contact with the city. Others in the neighborhood have been dealing with the city officials. I spent my time researching. Recently, I tried to contact city officials through a third party to set up a meeting on my property so I could show them the information, what I have, and we could take a tour of the neighborhood to see some of the information which is in that envelope. I followed that up with an email. I never received a response back. I would have welcomed any response, even sorry, can't, can't have a meeting. But to be completely ignored in a situation which the city considers important is not at all, makes me happy at all. I'm saying, I basically, I've said everything that I want to say regarding that. I know I only have about 30 seconds left, but I would appreciate it if the city, on another matter, would contact the city engineer or the engineering firm and ask them to redo the signs on River Street to assist traffic, because traffic is coming down to the intersection of River and Reading and reaching a dead end. The signs are misplaced. I told that to the, one of the city engineers a while ago, saying it should be placed in a different location to help traffic get back to 126. I see people turning around, people stopping on the street, they're looking, they don't know where to go. So anyway, that's all I have to say this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Antonio Galvez.
Hello, my name is Antonia Galvez, known as Tony Galvez. And the reason I'm here is because, as most of the people have already said, we are, I oppose what was done at One Step Alavés, the entertainment they had, a drag queen, and the attendance of our representatives. It's, it's really sad. I don't know if you'd want your children there, being 13 years old or eight years old, or whatever the age of your child is. You know, we're here to protect our children, and I hope that you're doing, wanting to do the same. I'm fortunate that I, you know, I'm not a resident. I am a businessman, a business owner. However, it's just sad. It's sad to see the fall of the families, the fall of the definition of a family. We now in real estate can no longer say master bedroom, we have to say primary. I mean, all these terms have just changed the definition of what a family is, of what life was all about, of what God defined life to be. And the acceptance here of things in this small little town, like many people I know here, we don't want that. God doesn't want it. In God we trust. That's what it's all about. However, it's just sad. It's sad to see this, and I pray, I pray that this city remains as it is, the small little town, the best little town in the state of California. And I pray for each of you that you do what God wants of you in making decisions here in this little town and truly representing us. It's, we, we, they voted you in, so represent them, not other people's agenda, not the minority's agenda, but represent what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate this time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maria Creston. Everybody says my name wrong. That's all right. I would just like to say to the council members who are there that I'm sure if you were giving a party for those children, you would never have come up with that form of entertainment. I think it's a, it's an agenda that's being pushed on us from the outside, and I think you can know, can tell from people here tonight that if you have the courage to resist that agenda, you will have a lot of people behind you. So go for it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Alvez.
Good evening. My name is Marie. I'm a resident here in Fillmore. I am here tonight to state my opposition to the drag queen performance on July, or June 16th at One Step Alavés. As Mayor Protem Vea Senor and Council Member Mendez were in attendance for the show, I denounce their support for this behavior in front of our youth. Thousands of years, thousands of years, it's been the adults in the room that protect the children. These are the children of Fillmore, and we're committed to protecting them from sexualized and harmful behavior and teachings. We are here to say that we have a voice, we have a vote, and we will use both to shield our children and keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brisa Romero.
Hello, City Council. My name is Brisa Romero. My pronouns are she, her, she, her, and ea, and I am a representative of One Step Alavés. I am the vice chair, board member of the organization, and I just wanted to share the great success that the 30th Annual Pride Resource Fair was. This year, we had countless community members from all over reach out to This year, we had countless community members from all over reach out to us, lend a helping hand, and really support this organization and our youth. We even had Assembly Member Steve Bennett come by and give a really remarkable speech and really praise the work that One Step was doing. For those of you that are unaware, last year, One Step Alavés was named Nonprofit of the Year in District 38 by Steve Bennett. We want to thank every organization that came by and supported our event to bring these resources that are not as readily accessible in our community. Thank you to Ventura County Public Health, to Ventura County Behavioral Health, Coalition for Family Harmony, Diversity Collective of Ventura County, UCLA Health, and so much more. We are also so, so thankful for Cristina Villa Senor and Albert Mendez for coming to our event and supporting our youth. Your presence was felt, and I know our youth are so happy to have you representing our community. That being said, we are so thankful that this event turned out as great as it would have. We will be continuing this event next year, so hopefully next year it grows bigger than it has this year, and we have even more community members join us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Thomas. I happen to be a Fillmore resident for, well, my whole life. And I had like a whole thing written out and everything. I was going to say it, but I'm just going to go off script. Hearing everything that's being said is honestly really disheartening. I don't know how to respond to that. And I mean, I'm talking about everything that is being said about the Pride Resource Festival that happened at One Step Alavés. And honestly, I went there. It was a wonderful event. I had a great time. Everybody else did. It was very informative. It was just a great atmosphere, and I don't understand all of the hate that is being said towards it. Yes, there was a drag queen there, but what's wrong with that? What was wrong? I would appreciate it if you didn't laugh while I spoke. Anyway, honestly, all this is just thinly veiled bigotry. That's what it is. You have a thing against drag queens, trans people. It's clear. Just say it. You don't like them. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to talk about how great the Pride Festival was. And yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ray Morales.
Mayor Austin, council members, chief, Mr. Kevin, and all these gentlemen, former employee here for nearly 37 years. Just to make a comment on this young man, it's not hate. Just want you to know. No, he left. Well, I'm just hoping that I speak, that it's not hate. I had something scripted as well, but listening to everything that's being said here, I support that, except for the last two speakers, they just, maybe just off the trail a little bit, at least in my view. But for council members that were present at that, I did vote for you. What I'm going to say is that in the years past, as an employee, city managers in the past would address all the employees to let us know how we are to act in the public. As members, whether we were dignitaries, as you folks here, you have to be careful because people are watching. The one thing I will say is when it comes to youth, they are our future. They don't have minds that are fully developed. We can go on with a lot of studies. Everyone can bring their studies in, but I think you all know what the direction is that I'm kind of voicing here. But it's those of you who are dignitaries of this city, you have to act accordingly. You know, if you want to go into something like this, do it where there's adults only and not children. You know, it's just not right. So, that's all I'm going to say. You're being watched, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michelle Mejia.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Mejia, and I'm actually here to represent the Hispanic community of Fillmore. Estoy aquí esta noche para expresar mi oposición a la actuación de drag queens transvestí que sucedió el viernes 16 de junio en One Step Alavés. Como el alcalde provisional Villa Senor y el concejal Méndez asistieron a este espectáculo, denunció su apoyo a este tipo de comportamiento frente a nuestra juventud. Estos son los niños de Fillmore, y estamos comprometidos a protegerlos de conductas y enseñanzas dañinas. Estamos aquí para decir que tenemos voz y voto, y que usaremos ambos para proteger a nuestros jóvenes y mantenerlos a salvo. Thank you.
Thank you. No, it was hard to decipher. She knew what it was.
And again, I taught penmanship. I'd like you to check out here the number of men here. Unusually high. I'm just going to just let you know that you're going to see more and more grandfathers, fathers, brothers, sons standing up for the women and children in our community and for living in truth. They will not let women be mocked by the idea that men can pretend to be women and that mental illness is to be protected while truth denied. Our children need to be protected from the adults, adults that should know better and are dragging our children into unfit places. My husband came tonight because he believes our community has to stand up to this, and public forums are really uncomfortable for him. If you are now going to get these kind of men, these beautiful men that are willing to stand up in the most difficult times, you can expect things are going to happen for Fillmore. I thank you all, all you grandfathers, fathers, brothers, and sons who are now standing up, for together we will make the changes for the good in our community because we sit under a God that we trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. Thank you for giving us the time. My name is Christina Mariotti. I'm a resident of Fillmore. I'm a mother of seven, five girls, two boys. I was furious to see the attack on our children's innocence by the drag queen show in our town, but I'm not going to speak of that right now. I just wanted to address the issues that people were saying that we're hating. We're not hating. We don't have hate in our hearts. We're concerned about our children and their innocence. The sexualization that is being used to promote the agenda is our problem. Whatever you want to do in the privacy of your home is your own business, but don't bring it out to our children and don't do it in front of the children of Fillmore. And when it was done, when parents were not present and at work, that is wrong. I've spoken to this council before, so that's all I'm going to say on my behalf, and now I'm going to read a letter from a neighbor of mine who was unable to be here tonight. He said, "Dear City Council Members, as a six-year resident and homeowner of Fillmore, I was enraged to find out that our children were entertained at an after-school program by a transgender person dressed in a women's bathing suit. The fact of being transgender is not the issue. The issue is that our city council condoned entertainment for schoolchildren, denigrated the dignity of a human person, specifically in this case, the dignity of women, by having the dignity of women, by having him entertain our children in a bathing suit and dancing in a provocative way. The issue is that such behavior and tolerance promotes sexism and sees women as objects rather than persons. Who of you would allow your wife, your husband, your daughter, your son, your grandchildren to dress up in a bathing suit and dance in an audience of schoolchildren? The Miss America Pageant in June of 2018 ended the swimsuit competition because fans and contestants welcomed a move towards progress and liberation by judging women based on their looks. Maybe it is time to promote more private schools in our Heritage Valley area, schools that promote the dignity of the individual person-based. The Fillmore School District and the Fillmore City Council needs to reevaluate their morals, standing and keeping in line with the 21st century, where individuals of all genders are not used as objects for pleasure but given the dignity and integrity as individuals. These are the values that will make Fillmore the most desirable city to raise a family in."
Thank you. And our last speaker is Liz Coffey.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth, and I am a resident in Fillmore. I'm here tonight to state my opposition to the drag queen performance on Friday, June 16th at One Step Alavés. I grew up here, actually. This is where I was born, and my husband and our two children are now living with my mom. And I have so enjoyed being able to see my kids do what I did as a little kid, which is walk down Central and get ice cream and go to the city hall here in the park. I was thinking those thoughts on my way here, and I just happened to notice on this screensaver that it says, "The city of Fillmore, the last best small town in Southern California." If we continue to destroy children's innocence in the manner that happened at One Step Alavés, it will not be the last best small town for much longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any more speakers. I'm going to make a brief statement. The One Step Alavés was not a council-sanctioned event. I just want everybody to know that. He will his card for receipt.
It was a mistake. It will be called on the agenda item. It's listed as the agenda item. Like I said...
Like I was saying, this was not a council-sanctioned event. I just want everybody to know that. And with that, we're going to move on to item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, Okay, let's go. Yeah, okay. Okay, let's go. Number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. Okay, seen none. We're going to move on to item to number eight, Consent Calendar.
I would like to move one of the items on the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and that would be item 8C, only because I think, I know I have a couple of questions on it. This was something that came before us last meeting, and it's a second hearing, a public hearing, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. So, we're going to move that on to the regular agenda.
I, pardon me, Tiffany, we can just pull it and discuss it, and then we'll put it back on the consent calendar if we'd like to right now.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead. So, we're pulling item 8C off the consent calendar, and then we'll put it back on the consent calendar. Okay, go ahead, and who's on this? Is it Brian? Okay.
I can field it, and Kevin's here as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and I apologize for not asking this question last meeting, but it just kind of occurred to me as I was reviewing it this go-around. What was the catalyst to implement this revision? I mean, was it simply to speed up the process? I don't mean simply, but the idea to speed up the process of dealing with code enforcement violations? Or was that primarily the issue? Was there something innate or something that had occurred that made you think we needed to move?
It was not based on any specific violation case at all. It's simply to, it's in accordance with state law, and it also outlines specific procedures and processes for handling code enforcement cases. There's nobody being targeted by the ordinance. What it does is it makes it clearer for staff and for anybody who may receive a notice of violation to clearly understand what that process is. And it establishes an appeal procedure for violations, and then an appeal can go to a board, which would be a public hearing body, and that's the state law component. Planning Commission, under this ordinance, the planning commission would be deemed that appeal board for violations. So, it makes it more uniform and easier to follow. Code enforcement gets very messy and sticky and very complicated, as you know.
And if I could add, there was a recent-ish code case that went up to the Court of Appeal in California, and they said on building code violation, code cases, that you needed to have a hearing body. And we didn't have a process for that, so this is something that we've been talking about doing for a while.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Tiffany.
I have a follow-up question, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
So, being that, want to make it clear to those who are the responsible parties of these code violations, when they receive a notice of a violation, is the notice clearly stated referencing the municipal code section or a link, an easy link, so that they can go and they can see all the information about what the appeals process is?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that's clear, so that someone gets a notice, it will be clearly stated in the notice, the appeals process, or where to go to on the city website and the municipal code to find it.
Yes, that's excellent. That's exactly what the intent of this is, is to outline specifically what the content of a notice will be, and it will outline procedures should you appeal, should you wish to appeal, you have so many days, file the form, the city clerk, et cetera. So, it will lay out that entire process in the initial notice. So, most likely, what we'll do is establish a template, what this notice will look like, and it'll contain these elements of the code. And so, everybody getting a notice of violation will receive essentially the same notice, but it will specifically outline, obviously, their violation. Yeah. And code references, and we could, there'll be a way to go and look those things up. We could establish a webpage specifically for violation cases. Yeah, that would be easy enough to do.
Yeah, just something that refers to, okay, to know the appeals process, click on this link, and it's, you know, an easy URL to get to, and just so that they know.
We can build a draft webpage and send it your way.
All right. Whatever would be convenient for folks. Not too much for us to ask. Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Everybody okay?
Yep. Thank you, Brian.
So, with that, I'd like to approve the consent calendar. So, move to me.
I'll second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, A, Public Hearing, Consideration of An interim Urgency Ordinance Extending for Ten Months and Fifteen Days, A Temporary Moratorium on the Establishment of or Expansion of Recreational Vehicle Storage and Self-Storage Facilities Within the City Limits, Declaring the Urgency thereof and Finding Exemption Under SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is the second time you've heard this item. Exactly one month ago, June 13th, you approved an emergency ordinance for 45 days, which prohibited any new applications or new permits from being issued for self-storage and RV storage. That's due to expire, coming up here, that's due to expire on July 27th. So, this ordinance, ordinance 23952, will extend that. other inquiries that have gone, that have looked at North Fillmore-specific plan area, which, as you know, is noted for residence and possible industrial uses. So far, our research is showing that these types of facilities may employ about three people or three and a half people, and they occupy large swaths of land. So, some cities that we've seen in the, in the county, Camrio, Thousand Oaks in particular, are having a maximum size, say, of like three acres. And we currently have one that's north of 11 acres, north of nine acres. So, they're quite large for a city like Fillmore. We don't know where all the tenants are coming from, if they're Fillmore residents, or if they're coming from these other cities where they're running out of storage places, and they're willing to drive all the way out here and park their RVs here in Fillmore, and again, eating up land potentially, eating up potential job opportunities for the future. So, that's why we just want to put the brakes on a little bit, study this, look at why are we getting all these calls, talk to the other cities, find out, you know, here, you guys, are you guys prohibiting these? Are you running out of properties to have these? And they're, they're coming out to Fillmore, because we want our economic day as well. We want to, you know, we want our, our local economy to, to boom, and we don't want these, these sort of job-dead zones. This ordinance was published in a hearing, as a hearing notice for today, and again, it's 10, 10 and a half months. It's deemed as a potential threat because it's inconsistent with our general plan. While we're in this period of 10 months, we'll be studying it, we'll continue to study it, and we'll put forth potential options for zoning code regulations. And I think I've gone over most of this stuff, but we are open to hearing. If you have things you want us to look at, let us know. We're doing the research now, and we'll build that in and give you a report back. This ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff's recommendations are to conduct a public hearing, which you've done here, find that the interim urgency ordinance, 23952, is exempt from CEQA, waive a full reading, and adopt by four-fifths vote interim urgency ordinance, 23952, extending the temporary moratorium prohibiting RV storage and self-serve storage facilities as read by title only, and direct staff to continue to study the appropriate modifications to the municipal code to mitigate the conditions outlined in the staff report and Section Two of the Urgency Ordinance that arise out of developing, maintaining, and expanding RV storage and self-storage facilities, including but not limited to prohibition of all such uses. The community development director is further directed to report back to City Council with his findings at least 10 days prior to expiration of this ordinance. Take any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
Just one, just out of curiosity. Are you aware of any of the other local cities that are having to pass the same ordinance? They're having the same issues?
Notably, Camrio and Thousand Oaks.
Okay.
And some of the things they're looking at is our proximity to major arterials.
Yeah.
So, they, they've actually looked at, saying you can't be within, say, 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet of a major arterial or Highway 101, because they see those as the major commercial corridors.
Right.
And as noted in this exhibit here, we've got these large swaths right on State Route 126. And so, that's, that's the area that the city saw as being kind of more of the commercial, we're, we're going to drive our tax revenues from this, this corridor here. But yeah, and so, in addition to the setbacks from major arterials, they're looking at minimum si, or maximum sizes. I think Thousand Oaks adopted a three-acre maximum, and we've got ones that far exceed three acres already. Yeah. And Camrio's following suit. Camrio, or Thousand Oaks just adopted it recently. Camrio is considering it, I believe, next week. And so, a lot of that, a lot of that legwork's been, been done as well. We might, we're going to look at those cities for potential solutions also.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we're going to open the public hearing and call our first speaker, Bob Brusell. Monzel, or?
And you have three minutes and 30 seconds. I meant, when the 30-second light, 30-second scale of Jello. All right. My name's Bob Brusell. I'm here to address tonight's item, Agenda Item 9A, the 10-month moratorium on the building of new, newer, expanding existing RV and self-storage facilities. This act will directly impact our project, because we have a completed design and ready to, is ready to be submitted to the city for approval. Little background, we're a small, family-owned business, and we also are RV owners. About three years ago, in the midst of the pandemic, we noticed upward trend in the sales of new RVs. Being RV owners, we were well aware what the increased sales of RVs would be, be added demand for the RV storage. With ours, RV storage already at max occupancy, we decided to open a facility in the, in an area we felt had the need and had future growth. We spent two years looking for a location, when we found an ideal property in July of 2022 in Fillmore. It is a lot, a small lot, as far as RV lots go. It's two and a half acres and is located in North Fillmore, at Fifth Street, just off A Street. The lot is tucked away in a quiet corner of North Fillmore and is sandwiched between two industrial facilities. We feel that the lot checks all the boxes for what you're looking for in your general plan. It's, it's out of sight, it's, you know, in the north, it's out of town and everything like that, and it's a small lot. At this point, we contacted the planning department to ensure the property is zoned and intended use. We spoke with the planning director, Kevin McSweeney, and we can, and he conveyed that our site was indeed zoned for RV storage. That same meeting, he spoke about the required, the required 30-page conditional use permit required by the city, and recommended we hire an experienced engineering firm to navigate the CUP process. Wanting to, this process to go smoothly and establish a good relationship with the planning department, we immediately hired Jensen Design and Survey Company to complete the design. Jensen has a vast project design and permitting experience within the Fillmore city limits. By the way, Kevin did a great, was great to work with, he was very responsive, very supportive. Over the next nine to 11, nine to 11 months, we're, they were in close contact with Kevin. They generated site plans, grading plans, soil testing, infiltration, testing, and landscape. At the request of planning, we've emerged four small parcels into one. Keep in mind that at no time over that 11-month, was there any mention of a moratorium? We were shocked, we were especially, we were especially puzzled as why we weren't, you know, warned of the moratorium. We unfortunately continued to expend funds on the project. After carefully, carefully reading the moratorium, we understand many concerns Fillmore has. However, it seems unfair for the city to first assure us that our project zoning requirements and a suitable project within the city, then actively work and advise us through the whole process, and then to pull the rug out from underneath our feet. We've expended significant funds on this thing. If, at the end, a couple, just a couple of seconds, if, if this, at, at the end of 10 months, they say no RV storage, we're out a lot of money, and we're, it's, it'll be brutal for a small, family-run operation. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to council. Any questions by council, or? Could you like to address the application? I mean, it was, it was not far enough long to be put on, to be allowed in, or what?
Can I just add one thing? Is that okay?
Tiffany?
Yeah, if I have any discussion. In 30 seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, we, we were two days from submitting that application before this moratorium came in. We had a meeting with Kevin set up, and he was a no-show, because we found out two days before the moratorium was, you know, in place, so that was it. I mean, the design was done and ready to be submitted.
Okay.
Yeah, we worked diligently, too, for the past year.
Everything the applicant said is true. I worked with them for about two years, Jensen Design, and we looked through the North Fillmore-specific plan, which does permit RV storage or storage. And at the last minute, just before the last city council meeting, that's when city staff decided to come forward and request for a moratorium. And I did not meet with them. It wasn't a no-show, but I explained that we have a moratorium, so it'd be fruitless to meet at this time. We've been working with them, our, the Jensen Design and, and the applicant for about two years, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any discussion, or not?
Good question, Brian. Could you pull up the map again of our sites? These are the current sites, right? The, the five that were highlighted in?
Correct.
Red?
Whoops.
Do you have, okay, so those, those are current. Do we have a map?
Is his property the one up in North Fillmore?
I'm not sure. It's up, I think it's in the North Fillmore specific plan, is that right?
To the left.
Where is it? Right here?
Right, so these are, yeah, the red are already established, but we don't have a map, though, of, well, where his, or potential lands that we're looking at, too, of, of basically that could be storage, but are not yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the?
That's up against Amron.
The MPD Zone, yeah, the industrial zone.
Right, I know we don't see that so much on this map. Okay.
Yeah, we don't, I didn't put the zoning map up here, but yeah, the MPD Zone, which is the industrial zone, and that's inclusive of some properties in North Fillmore.
Okay.
Is this up against Amron?
Yeah. I believe it's just south of Amron.
It's right in the same area.
Yeah.
So, I guess my, my, my question would be, for the moratorium, is, is there potential to, to list specific sites, or at least parts of the city that we want to put under moratorium? Or, I mean, or would it be all, if we do, it has to be all city?
It doesn't necessarily have to be the entire city. That's one of the things that we'll, we'll look at in the study, to try to determine where, what would be the best location, and under what standards.
Sorry to interrupt. So, the whole point of this is to just put a timeout?
Right, right.
While staff works to figure out what regulations to come back to the city to scale down where it's allowed right now. So, the thought is, is that, I mean, Brian's saying this fall, he thinks we'll be ready to workshop it to planning commission and the council, so it's just a pause for a couple of months, and then we'll come back to you guys to have the opportunity to adopt the zone change, to say where they will and won't be allowed.
So, this isn't, this isn't all 10 months, it's just?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
It's just lopping?
Yeah, under law, you got up to 10 and a half months, so we're taking the full 10 and a half months. But the intention is that this fall, it will come back, so the council will decide where specifically they should be allowed, to scale it back from where it is right now.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you for clarifying.
We often get inquiries for permits and applications, and then we don't, we don't see them. They never, they end up not submitting. Sometimes years go by. So, you know, we can't pick a good time to, to come forward. It's just kind of like, there's always something brewing, and we don't always see people come to fruition with it. You know, if somebody is processing something and it becomes not allowed under the ordinance changes, you know, they, they still have the full use of the property to do anything else that is allowed under the code, you know? If it's a lot merger, or if it's establishing any other type of business, you know, that's all, none of that's prohibited.
I have a question again.
Yeah.
If they, if we put the moratorium in, let's say it's, goes along, or whatever, they're still allowed to submit their application for review, correct, or no?
We won't take an app?
Is that, no?
No.
No, wait until? Right now, no. The city wouldn't accept it, because that triggers?
Right.
Things. So, we would just ask them to hold on to it until the council adopts what the new zoning would be.
Okay.
Okay, just for clarification, Brian, I'm sorry. So, at the end of the two, next two months, and I hate to have you repeat this again, but, I mean, where does that put the applicant at the end of the next two months? Does he ever have an opportunity to move forward with his project?
Not until the council either, if the council extends the moratorium tonight, not until the moratorium ends, which will be either 10 and a half months from now, if it's not further extended, or when the council adopts an ordinance revising the zoning for them. And if that area is still allowed for storage, then he could submit.
Okay. And you're, you're thinking that's two, three months?
It could be. Yeah, we could, it's, yeah, it could be three months. We could move it up.
So, will that come back? Will the moratorium come back?
The moratorium will come back, either we're going to extend the moratorium or we're not at that point.
Okay, and if we choose not to, what does that do with the ordinance?
What would come back is a zoning ordinance to change permissible zones and to probably shrink the footprint of where storage sites are allowed, because right now, the idea was that it's allowed too many places that we need for other opportunities. And so, the staff will prepare an ordinance that will go to planning commission, and then they'll make a recommendation to the council for adoption, and that ordinance will say where they're allowed in the city.
Okay. And obviously, I think what our concern is, all of us asking questions here, is to have an applicant and a developer come in and spend, you know, I think you said two years?
Sure.
That's, that's my concern right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
It's kind of like?
And then, if he articulated yanking the rug out from underneath them, and that's, I think, what we need to avoid, and I'm trying to figure out, how does he get around that?
Right.
Is there a way we can waive his site into the ordinance now? Or no?
No, not really.
Not without the review and everything else?
Right.
Okay. So, we're?
And right, and the problem is, if you didn't continue the moratorium now, and you said, come back with, you couldn't come back with a new moratorium, because once you have a moratorium, if you let it lapse, you have to wait a year. So, it's not like we could let the initial moratorium lapse, and then say he could do his, and then come back on this, then other people could come in. So, we just need to ask him to please give us a few months to sort through this, and then see where, where it's going to be allowed.
Okay.
Tiffany, one last follow-up question. Can council, in agreement with staff, work on a date to bring the, the, the potential changes to land use zoning? That's reasonable.
Well, I mean, it sounds like Brian's saying that maybe three months, they could bring it to planning commission, and then, because it would need to be a notice public hearing, so they would have to hear it, make a recommendation, then it would be noticed for the council. So, it sounds like this fall.
Yeah. We can make it this fall.
Okay.
Okay. It sounded like we don't have a way around it, so, okay. Then with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Tiffany, do we need to read the ordinance?
Someone needs to.
Okay. All right. I'll, I will make a motion that, okay, let's make sure. I'm sorry, am I reading one through four again? Or we closed the public hearing?
Yeah, we closed it.
Oh, it closed, okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, I do. I'm sorry. I'll make that motion that we, we find that the interim urgency ordinance, number 23-952, and interim urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, California, extending urgency ordinance, number 23-950, which established a 45-day temporary moratorium on the establishment or expansion of recreational vehicle storage and self-serve storage facilities within city limits for an additional 10 months and 15 days, declaring the urgency thereof and finding exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And with that, I'm going to do a roll call, because we need a four-fifths vote. So, Georgie, will you take a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem, v. Senor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number nine B.
Tiffany, do we need to read the ordinance?
Someone needs to-
Okay.
Put the name of it.
All right, I will make a motion that, okay, let's make sure. I'm sorry, am I reading one through four again? Or we closed the public hearing?
Yeah, we closed it.
Oh, it closed, okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, I do, I'm sorry. I'll make that motion that we, we find that the interim urgency ordinance number 23-952, and interim urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, extending urgency ordinance number 23-950, which established a 45-day temporary moratorium on the establishment or expansion of recreational vehicle storage and self-serve storage facilities within city limits for an additional 10 months and 15 days, declaring the urgency thereof and finding exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And with that, I'm gonna do a roll call, because we need a four-fifths vote. So, Georgie, will you take a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem v. Senor?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brogie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to item number, 9B, further extension of the city of Fillmore local emergency declaration resulting from a sewer line collapse.
Thank you, Mayor, gonna make this brief tonight. We're asking the city council to adopt Resolution 233949 to extend the declaration of a local emergency arising from the collapse of a sewer manhole which rendered the downstream pipeline unusable.
So, as you obviously see, the construction is still ongoing. The directional drilling is nearing its completion for the encasement as it's crossing underneath the highway. And then they'll, they'll pull the new sewer line through. They'll have to build two new manholes. But it is progressing. The de-watering has worked. We're not spilling any sewage. And we're not spilling any of the, the de-watering is not like filling up the basin, so all seems to be going smoothly. But we are still needing to wrap that up and extend the emergency. Any, are there any questions about the construction, traffic, timelines, anything?
I think it'd be great, Troy, thank you for your presentation. If you could give sort of a, if the timeline has shifted at all, just to let us know what that is.
So, I mean, the construction schedule from the time that they started was really like 60, 60 to 75 working days. So they should be wrapping that up around the end of August. They are starting to work some Saturdays to try to expedite that. I know that this Saturday is expected to be hot, but they're still planning on working on Saturday to try to, try to keep that moving. So we're looking at probably, you know, around the end of August, we're, we're gonna take down, you know, the traffic control as we can. But really, I think the, the traffic control is gonna stay up in, in the manner that it is, probably for the duration, just because where the bypass pumps are. And there's a, there's a lot of work that has to be done coordinated to, to do the, the new connections and make sure that everything is tested and, and will flow, as well as reconnecting all the sewer laterals that are, that are hooked up to that line.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
No, I just had a comment. I am asked, as I'm sure the rest of the council members have, on a regular basis by constituents and people we run into. And your report is so detailed and provides so much information. And it's gonna be really helpful, I know from me as a council person, to answer questions that I keep getting from our constituents. So I really appreciate the work that you put behind us. Thank you.
Excellent.
So it means she'll be able to cut and paste out of your staff report and send the, send the responses like that.
I, I will have to defer the thanks to Tiffany's office, because they, they, they made sure that all, all that wording was in there.
Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-3949 to extend the declaration of a local emergency arising from the collapse of a sewer manhole which rendered the downstream pipeline unusable.
I have a mo, I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number, 9C, shade structures over tot lots at Two Rivers and Dolores Day Parks.
So, this is finally fun, right? This one's, this one's like, yeah, not like serious, not heavy, like, this is actually fun. So, back, I believe, the March 14th city council meeting, Mayor Protem v. Senor requested that the city allocate funds for shade structures. It was agreed upon at that time to move forward, so we started looking into this and then realized that, you know, this is a visual, kind of a, you know, a stamp on the city and the city parks. And, you know, wanted to bring this item back just to give you guys all an opportunity, kinda help shape what we, what we make it look like, right? So I have included in, in there, there were some attachments of, you know, some technical nature. But I have a short slideshow, I won't even say presentation, but short slideshow to, to bring up for showing what the, the possibilities are. So, we currently have something like this at Two Rivers Park, or, I'm sorry, at Rio Vista Park, over the, the tot lot play area. And you can see this is a hexagon shape. There's a lot of steel construction underneath. There's a pointed center and, and, you know, it becomes heavy and burdensome, but it is a full coverage, right? Provides you full coverage underneath the area. There's not little slivers of light that can get through. This is another example of that, where you have the posts, but you also have the one side attached to a concrete wall. So this, there is some flexibility here, where these things can be custom ordered, custom made, to build into the, the, the existing parks and fit to where we need. Obviously, over at Shields Park, we have a need for, for tot lot stuff. But there's trees already that's, that's covering and providing a lot of shade. At Dolores Day, we don't have, you know, it's kind of out in the open, it's exposed. Two Rivers, kinda the same scenario. So there wouldn't necessarily be anything to attach onto, but if, if it needed to be, we could. Then there's like a cantilevered, you know, so they do like cantilevered umbrellas. Again, this has a bunch of steel, you know, in the structure of it. You know, I'm sure the foundation of that, the, the vertical post is probably pretty big. But we can, we can make a lot of things work. As far as, you know, if you want it like linear to block out an entire area, you know, here again. And this gives you a good opportunity to kinda see what the structure underneath that looks like. You know, hopefully, it's not so exposed to the elements, you know, it remains covered and painted so it doesn't rust and doesn't, you know, become a maintenance issue with us. The, the one that's over at Rio Vista is holding up quite well. So, you know, we shouldn't have any concerns about that. But there are other options. So, you know, different shape, you can get a square. Again, you, in this picture, you can actually see, it's probably an early morning here, because you can see where the shadows are cast. The, the play equipment, the play area is not really covered by the shade, it's kinda getting underneath it. And the shadows are way off to the side. So it's probably an early morning picture. But there are also some fun things that can be done to, you know, to kinda break up a very rigid, very geometric. And, and these are called sails. So they, they have the sail designs and you can kinda stagger them. You can change the shapes or the, the angles of them, and you can still provide a pretty good amount of shade coverage. You can see there's little slivers of light that do get through to the ground, so that might be something of interest. The other thing that this allows you to do is kinda change the colors of, of the sails, and you'll see that in a couple of these slides. So here you have, it looks like a gray and a blue. So you can, you can have multiple colors. Here's a red and a blue. And this one, you can see, again, by the shadows cast on the ground, it's covering everything it needs to really cover and, but it still allows some light to, to get through. And that is the end of the pictures. I know that it gives you, you know, kind of a real quick go-through of different shapes, different structures, and obviously different colors. I mean, we can pick a color theme that would be, you know, match the high school colors. We could pick a different color theme if we wanna do like blue and orange, like our, our city logo. But it gives a lot of opportunity for, for selection, so. Any questions? Yes?
Go ahead.
I, I like all the options, of course, but price-wise, is the, the ones that are more, I think it was the hexagon, is that gonna be, of course, it's got more reinforcement, it's got more of a roof than the, than the ones I think you call the sails?
It costs, it'll cost more for the heavier, heavier duty structure. I'm not sure that durability actually is any better, for a couple of different reasons. One, when you have a solid piece of, of material like that, when, when wind hits it, it's gonna try to kinda cut through. It's gonna try to find a way through. The sails allow some of that air to kinda move through in, in ways. But the one, the one that we do have, well, I guess we have two over at, at Rio Vista, is holding up quite well. And that is, you know, the more beefier structure.
Right.
So, you know, it seems like it's holding up well. The material, the, whatever the, I don't know if it's canvas or whatever that, the fabric material is, is holding up quite well. They would use the same material, whether it be the sail type or the other, the beefier structure. But I, I do imagine that the cost is gonna be significantly more with all the extra steel.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions? Any direction?
I, I mean, I-
Any, or can-
Well-
I meant, any color schemes?
I'll make a comment.
Anything.
Well-
Because this is our last time to-
I know, to, to put that out.
We will have to bring it back again before we award a contract, so at that time, we'll, we'll-
I meant we-
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just happy it's moving forward and- We wanna be cost-effective and, you know.
Let's get in-
Carrie, you look like you wanna say something.
Let it go.
Go, okay.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm going back and forth between the, the more hard surface type versus the sails. I mean, I just replaced all the cushions in my backyard, my patio furniture, and it cost me a fortune. And I hate to see us have to do that like every three, four years, replace those sails. So, I mean, I guess maybe, and you've probably done this, or somebody probably has, a cost compare, probably Tiffany did it, a cost comparison between the sails versus the hard surface.
We, we've done some, so as the staff report indicated, there was some quotes that were done. They did not get quotes from custom canopies, but, you know, with the Rio Vista Park, that was kind of the, the, staff's move forward was like, hey, we really like the way that's holding up, let's, let's kinda use the custom canopies. But we could put a spec together that would allow us some flexibility and see what we could get as far as pricing. The construction too, even with the sails, there could be a center post in the middle of the play area that if we, we went with the sails version or went with the, you know, the beefier structure, it might, it might end up being, you know, similar construction, but we can, we can price it out. We can get options as far as pricing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking durability, I suppose.
I was thinking a kid donks his head on it.
Oh, this, this stuff is gonna be high. Yeah, it'll be-
I know.
It'll be plenty high enough over the, the area. Which, you know, the, again, you know, the higher it gets, the more, more cost of the steel that you're gonna get. But it shouldn't, we shouldn't really have any issues there. If, I mean, the steel posts that come down to the ground, we can put padding around those if that's, if that's a concern.
That reminds me of high school. We had bolts and they put it and somebody ran into it and knocked himself out.
Uh-huh. No comment. Albert, any?
I, I like the sail idea. To me, aesthetically, very feasible to die.
Okay.
And as far as, you brought up a good point, where the wind, the sail idea, it would eliminate some of that wear and tear on a larger surface.
Okay. Yeah. And we'll, we'll put together-
Put it all together?
I was gonna say, we'll put it together, we'll, we'll allow some flexibility in it so that we, we can, we can decide. And then at a staff level, we'll take a look at it and see financially what makes more sense. And then we'll bring that back before we award any contract. You'll have opportunities to kinda pick and choose. And then, you know, we'll also make suggestions as far as colors. We'll probably be able to change colors even after the contract is awarded, I would imagine, so.
Alright.
Okay?
We'll start thinking about it.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
No, no, no approval needed on that?
No action, it's a receivable.
It's just a receivable.
Troy?
Okay. See, that one was fun.
Moving on, item 9D, city council approve the use of American Rescue Funds to support the Spirit of Santa Paula for fiscal year 2023 to 2024.
Thank you. We're asking the city council tonight to approve using American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $150,000 to support the Spirit of Santa Paula in fiscal year 2023 through 2024. The budget committee met with staff on, on June and discussed this item. They are recommending using ARPA funds for contribution for this fiscal year. The other thing that is going on behind the scenes currently, the city of Santa Paula, city of Fillmore, and Ventura County are also working with the shelter on forming an MOU to come together at least for the next two years to try to find funding for the facility. They, as was reported in the paper, they have struggled for funding for the last fiscal year. We believe that this cushion will give them enough money for the next several months. We can also continue to work on the MOU to bring back to city council. One of the key items with the MOU that we've worked with Assembly Member Steve Bennett is to have him work with the legislature at the state level to have Fillmore and be recognized for the spirit of Santa Paula to be our shelter. So we get credit for that from the state. With shelters, it's not in different ways, we're dealing with the homeless population. So that's part of the wherethes within the contract right now, for him to work on that during a term of the agreement, which we're looking at being a two-year agreement initially. We do plan on coming back to city council, it looks like it's gonna be in August right now, with the overall contract. But tonight, we're asking for $150,000 to be used and provided to the spirit of Santa Paula. For the beginning of this year, about 22% of the population of the shelter has come from Fillmore. So we are supporting residents that do go down there and use the facilities. And I know Ms. Wilson-Bolton is here tonight, she's just listening. If you have any questions she would ask you, she could answer them for you, but we told her bring this tonight to the, to your attention. And we're asking for support moving forward with that recommendation.
Any questions?
No questions, just a comment. And I think that this is just something, something that we simply have to do. We're relying on Spirit of Santa Paula, you know, for many things and services for our homeless that come from Fillmore. And Ms. Wilson-Bolton provided stats that indicated how many of the homeless people actually have utilized the Spirit of Santa Paula. So this is something I think that, that we can't say no to.
Any other questions, any comments?
Just a comment, Mayor, thank you. And I just wanted to echo Councilmember Brogie's comments. Now, this is something that we absolutely need to support. And the shelter in Santa Paula has been serving Fillmore residents for years. And so this is really the first time, I mean, we, we helped fund them last year through ARPA, but really, this is, you know, the first time that we're looking at making a potential longer-term agreement with them. And I know that's not what we're, what's discussion right now, it's the ARPA funding. But want to know that, you know, to share with, with the folks who use the shelter and those that run the shelter, that city of Fillmore, on my end, has, has long-term support for this. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll make that motion that the city council approve using an American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds in the amount of $150,000 to support the Spirit of Santa Paula for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
I have a motion, do I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 9E, consideration of requests to sponsor up to 25,000 for the county of Ventura 150th Anniversary Celebration.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We received a letter from the Chair for the Board of Supervisors and also the CEO with Ventura County earlier in June, and we couldn't make it our last meeting. So we're gonna bring it forward. They were making a request for a financial contribution for the county's 150th Anniversary Celebration, which has already kicked off June 23rd and is gonna be going through November 2nd of 2023. The events will be in various locations, Santa Paula, Ojai, Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, to name a few. The foundation, excuse me, the Ventura County Community Foundation, the Economic Development Collaborative, the Pacific Coast Times, and the Museum of Ventura County are all kinda coalescing and leading the charge for the fundraising event. I know the activity has started. I know the activities have started, we do not have any budgeted funds for this, staff has kind of looked at our numbers, and we'd feel comfortable with a recommendation for $5,000 or $2,500 for a contribution, if that's the desire, the wishes of City Council. If you wish to go more than that, we'd look to find the money and come back with a, where we getting from, but for us, we recommend $5,000 as a community sponsor, and then the $2,500 as a resourcefulness sponsor, so with either one of those councils, we feel comfortable, we can come up with the funding for that of our current budget. Both up to your discussion.
So Dave, you've got the paperwork that I was, well, I left at home, but the donations, the $50,000 and $25,000 and whatnot, is that what you're looking at in front of you? So there's different sponsors that were-
Yeah.
Depending on how much money, then you, you're certain title, the more money, then the more tickets you get or whatnot, better parking spots. But is, do you, is it your belief, and I thought about this later, is it your belief that they asked for $25,000 so we would be that highest sponsor category? Or was it just arbitrarily $25,000 from, as a city, or is that for the sponsorship?
I think it's always you would ask for the highest amount you can when you go up for a donation request, I think it was from the Ventura County Museum, I think that's the letter that included that cost into it. They only have, they call 10 available of that number, which, which coincidentally lines up with the 10 cities.
10 cities.
Also, the ingenuity sponsors, that's $15,000, that's only 10 available there as well, then you get down to creativity sponsors, that's $10,000, as we mentioned, the community sponsors is $5,000, and the resourceful sponsors at $2,500, and there's different benefits that come along with that.
Okay, because when I first read their letter, I initially took that meaning that they were suggesting that we throw in $25,000, you know, outside of the sponsorship ideas. I mean, that we, yeah, I'm not making myself clear here, but bottom line on it, I was a little frustrated with it, with the letter, the fact that it was sent to us after the fact, after the activities actually started, and also because there's absolutely zero reference to the city of Fillmore. And again, and I feel like I fight this battle so often at the county level, where Fillmore ends up being the ugly stepchild, if I can say that.
Yeah.
But it, we're always kind of like forgotten about or left off, yeah, and this, this was, when I first read it, was a prime example of, you know, us, me feeling that way, that, you know, so I, I'd be good with $2,500, but I think we still need to communicate to the county or to whoever's backing this completely, whether it's Matt LeVere-
Or the Ventura County Museum.
Or the museum, well, the museum's going to have to get a green light from, from the supervisors, though, they're not going to act independently, so I think we still need to articulate to them why we're not giving them $25,000. I mean, aside from the fact, they obviously don't have $25,000, but, you know.
I spoke with supervisors today at the Urbanution Control Board, and I had brought this issue up-
Oh, good, okay.
And they said they weren't expecting $25,000, they were asking on behalf of the museum.
Right.
But they told me, so they were asking on behalf of the museum.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what I got also.
Sure, they, they might be asking because of, you know, on behalf of the museum, but that doesn't address the issue that there's no reference to the city of Fillmore.
I mean, I, I think Gary Cushing's letter that he sent to all of us pretty much outlined everything that we were probably all feeling at the time, I meant-
Yeah, but the public didn't see Gary Cushing's letter.
Yeah, well, I want me to read it to them, I'm just, but I meant, many, many of the issues you just brought up are several of his issues.
Right.
I meant, and I totally agree with his, what he, what his issues were. I meant, I was thinking, thinking the same thing, no reference to Fillmore, they've already started it, they're asking us after the fact, I mean, it's kind of like, wait a minute, Fillmore was just tossed on.
Right.
And there's, just to add, there isn't a breakdown of where the money will go.
Right.
Right, what is it funding within, you know, these different events?
Well, and that was Gary Cushing, and for those who don't know, Gary Cushing is one of our planning commissioners, but he pointed out, why are they asking for money after they've already planned the event, that's kind of backwards, I mean, how do they know what budget they have to work with if they don't have the money, you know, in their-
And I believe, as a council member, I did not receive an individual information about this until we set on the agenda, I don't know if any of you have received other information from the museum.
Just the-
Okay, right, so we weren't given anything back in May or June, right?
Just the letter sent today.
Okay, okay.
So I, I'd be comfortable with $2,500 too, I meant, I'd be comfortable with zero, but-
Can we address communicating to the county our, I'll use a kind word, just our dissatisfaction with the way this was communicated to us? Can I write the letter?
I'll sign it for you.
Feel free to write it.
Well, I'll sign it.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate all the comments from my fellow council members and Mayor, and I do want to make, make a recommendation, because, again, there's no reference, like you said, to Fillmore, or our wonderful Fillmore Historical Museum, and the opportunity that this 150-year event would have to bring people out to Fillmore and to mention it, so my recommendation is for the $2,500, but also to share this event, I know there's one, I think it includes just one VIP seat and tent pass, but to-
We can send the museum, our museum.
Well, that's, I wanted to say, to, to offer that to Ms. Sue Zider, if I'm pronouncing it right, who was the director of the museum, she would like to be in attendance, and-
Or Martha, or-
And if, or Martha, right, and, and if, I think it's calling for city logos or materials, but I would be open to not only our logo, but the, just information about our Fillmore Historical Museum, if that can be included.
I'm good with that. I would, I would rather not give them anything, but I meant, we, we-
We can't play that way.
It was just in terms of the material, if we're going to, if they're, if for that amount of money that we are providing, the material from Fillmore, if it is, I mean, information from our city, yes, but I would like to include with it information about our museum.
Like she was saying, I'd like to send our museum staff, if we can, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to, where is it?
I don't even know if-
Oh, hold on.
I don't even know if we need to make a motion, do we, we all agreed $2,500?
I guess my motion is to contribute $2,500?
Okay.
Do we want to need a motion?
No, okay.
We don't need a motion.
We're all consensus.
Oh.
Okay.
Five, 500.
500. No, no, 50 bucks. With that, we'll move to item number 10, 55. With that, we'll move to item number 10, Committee Commissions and Board Reports.
Okay, I do have, I do have one update. I sit on the Ventura County Regional Sanitation District, and this past week, most members of the district board had a tour of our toll and landfill, and it was the first time that I'd been up there, my husband goes regularly, he's a, he's a regular user of the landfill, and so he usually tells me, I'm, I'm going to the dump this week, but this time I told him, I'm going to the dump this week, and it was actually very interesting, it was, and, and the staff at the, at the, at the sanitation district did an excellent job of just explaining how a landfill works, and really where our trash goes from the time we throw in our trash cans and it makes its way there. And they explained to us also that the landfill is getting to its capacity, and so it is scheduled within the next seven to 10 years, I believe, to reach that capacity, and the planning is starting now of what we do in the Santa Clara Valley in terms of our trash after this period of time. So, anyway, it was very interesting, and I'm just glad to, to be a part of it. Thank you.
Any other? Carrie?
Yeah, I had a few things going on since our meeting almost a month ago. In June, as Natalie from Edison mentioned during her presentation this evening at the beginning of the meeting, I did attend the Southern California Edison Roundtable Meeting, it was really impressive, and the first time they've held one like that with attendees, it was held at Cal State Channel Islands, it was very informative for me, specifically, we had at least 40 people in attendance, including the CEO of Edison, Steve Powers, who I'd not met before, a lot of county officials, elected officials, and just the whole, overall, just a roundtable discussion on how to deal with some of the issues that are coming up, like the, what do they call it, the goal for 2045, the zero, the carbon neutrality, and the zero emissions deadline set in 2035, and how are we going to meet those goals? So, a lot of, we didn't solve any issues at that point in time, but we all agreed that this was something that was worthwhile, and they plan to again hold another roundtable. I went on behalf of the city manager and our mayor, they were not available that morning, so I went, and hopefully they won't be able to go next time and I can go again. So I did that, then in June also, I participated in the League of California Cities Legislative Meeting via Zoom, which was really informative, I'm always, I'm always trying to track the legislations coming down the pike, because some things that's happening in Sacramento, I know a lot of us are not happy about, but there, there was a lot of talk about pending legislation for homeless and things that are happening there, and nothing to, you know, report out on as far as something concrete, because these are all pieces of legislation that are moving through the pike in Sacramento. And then, again, the League of California Cities, they act as lobbyists for our, our city councils across the state, and they keep us in the loop on what they're supporting, what they suggest we support, and what we, we try to battle. There's another webinar of the same nature scheduled for July 17th. And then last of all, on July 7th, I attended a VCTC meeting at the Camarillo City Hall, had a full agenda, and I really want to thank the number of Fillmore people that drove over Grimes Canyon for a 9:00 AM meeting to talk about the, primarily their issue from Fillmore was the Sierra Northern Train, and even though it was on the consent agenda, we had several people speak, there were probably at least six or seven people that attended from Fillmore, and I was just really proud of our Fillmore constituents that did that, that made the effort. And then, what, at the conclusion of the meeting, when the whole entire meeting was over with, we had an impromptu meeting, it just kind of happened on its own, we started, we had all the Fillmore people, Martin, the CEO of VCTC, Brian Miller from Kelly Long's office, and who else was there, anyway, we had this really great impromptu meeting with some people that needed to hear what our Fillmore constituents were sharing, and it's, so it was really helpful, and I think that's how things get done. So, anyway, that was my report, those three meetings.
Okay, Albert?
Okay, with that, we're going to move to item number 11, City Manager, City Manager Verbal Report.
Just a reminder that currently, we are replastering the community pool, and we hopefully have that done by mid-August, and then I believe it's Friday the 25th, we're looking at having a, hopefully, grand opening, again, at the Quad Center, we'll have a cardboard boat race, invite In-N-Out Burger to come out, so if you want to purchase a ticket, you can do it online or through social media to pre-purchase that ticket, then also be a flick and float that night, so it might be a one-day, one-weekend event, but at least we're trying to get people back in there, and we're also looking forward to the school district, you know, helping us and partner with the replastering project as well moving forward, so that's all tonight, thank you.
Okay.
With that, we're going to move to item number 12, Closed Session, we're going to go into closed session for two items, conference, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the city will conduct a session pursuant to consider the legal counsel regarding the litigation to which the city is party of, the file of such litigation as follows, this is a long one. Okay, I'll just read the appeal of the city of Fillmore. Even though there's a bunch of other cities involved with it. Conference with legal counsel, the council will conduct a closed session to consider negotiations and give direction to negotiations regarding the certain real property located at the south side, location of Mountain View and Santa Clara Streets, with many, many mansions. We'll go into closed session.
Okay. Council met in closed session and there is no reportable action. And the meeting is adjourned and we will reconvene our next scheduled meeting Tuesday, August 8th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.